Everybody here. Approve or disapprove of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
Motion by Jane.
I think by Justin.
Yeah, motion by Justin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approve or disapprove of consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Janelle, second by Sandy. Approve the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the consent agenda consists of the minutes and all that stuff, doesn't it?
We're down here now.
Yeah. Just making sure that we're... Okay, consider approval of public work summer projects. The yard waste, sank fence. That's what we're... my question is...
I guess the question is, do you really want to have me get bids and prices to build a fence? Or do you want to have... see if our new program works before we go to that expense?
I just clean the fence for hours, all.
I'd say, see, I've been down there, it doesn't look like there's much.
Just some stuff on the fence.
As far as stuff being down there like right now, I mean, I think it might be helping a little bit the way we're doing it.
Our concern was with it locked, that people would just back up and throw it over the fence. That was our concern when we...
They just dump it alongside of their house.
Yeah. Jerry's able to just...
She had a nasty personal experience.
Yes. Jerry's able to just get a cattle panel and close that opening in the east fence line up. And really, the question is, do you want me to proceed to find... get prices? Or do you want to let it go for the summer and see how it goes? The gate is locked, we are checking keys out. The sign for the gate should be done, hopefully, in the next day or two.
Talk about the sign, what's that?
Basically, the rules of to check out a key and what can be dumped and that you have to empty your containers. The rules of the site are going on a sign that's going to be put on the gate where you have to unlock it.
I was kind of shocked to see the sign thing in there, but I don't care that he done it. But I just didn't remember it being on the city council meeting.
What's that?
The sign, to have a sign made up.
Oh, we talked about that a long time ago, that we need to do that.
I don't know, but what's the cost of a sign?
I don't know, it won't be a lot, Tanner's doing it.
Yeah, I don't mind them doing it, but I was just...
I would say somewhere between $50 and $100. We had one up there before and it's...
So is it a painted sign?
It's a vinyl lettered metal sign.
Yeah, I just don't remember.
We have to give people something and, I'm sorry, all the newsletters and all the stuff in the world aren't going to do that. And I thought the really important part was that they are instructed in some way or form that those bags that they haul their leaves up in there have to be emptied and the bags taken home with them.
I understand.
And...
No, I'm not arguing that, I just don't remember the bringing of the city council on approving it.
We talked about having a sign made clear back when we approved it, and I just hadn't done enough about it.
Who has the key?
Not you. Jerry and I have the key, and they have to come to me to get one.
During work hours?
So, what's the dump in the afternoon, tough luck?
If they haven't come to get a key, yeah.
They don't come in the morning to get a key, yes.
We can say if they want to do that, get a key, they can go here and now.
And they're allowed to keep it and I'll keep track. I've got... Jerry brought me 10 keys, so there's plenty of keys to go around. It won't be just one that everybody has to share. And people are good about... so far, it's worked. We've only had a couple of people check them out, but Jane brought hers back and...
I drew a delay.
Yeah.
I revert rule.
Is there a deposit on the key to get one?
No.
No. Haven't done any of that. No, I don't want to mess with that. That's a bookkeeping nightmare.
The decision is, we're going to leave the fence as is. We've got a sign coming for anywhere between $50 and $100 that will detail out how to access the dump and what's allowable in the dump. And the fence, the only thing in looking at it, the fence or the gate looks a little... I don't know if it could use any touch-up or not, I mean, it just... but maybe not, maybe just want to let it... I'm looking at you, Jerry, like, do you have a feeling about it or not? If not, it's no big deal.
Kind of like a dump.
Yeah, a dump gate. Okay, all right, so that's all we've left.
No, 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 no. What do you want...
Do you think the gates will... the gate will last another summer? I mean, back and forth, it seems to be kind of dragging, hanging.
I think what I need to get, you put the wheels on the gates, you know, to kind of...
Yes. That would be good. What would something like that cost?
Probably $10, $10 bucks though.
That would be good. Then it would level it out and it wouldn't sink down in the dirt, or... yeah, that would be great.
And make it easier for people to open and close.
Exactly.
They stand on and ride it with them.
Wouldn't you say?
You don't want to hear what I said. They could use it for an amusement ride. No, no, okay.
So we're going to put funny seat belts and all that stuff around these things?
Yeah. Put seat belts on them.
Okay. So we're going to leave the fence as is and we might believe it till fall, right?
Or just to see how it goes.
Yeah, let's see how it goes.
You will take care of the wheel on the gate then?
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, that's okay with me, does he have to make a motion?
I'm guessing $10, maybe they're...
I'll make a motion. Good, I'll make a motion. To keep the existing fence throughout the summer and see if we have any violations to approve the purchase of a sign up to $100, $50 to $100, hopefully it's $50, to $100, and detailing out the... Nancy will shorten this.
Rules.
Rules. And...
The wheel.
Jerry will put the wheels on the gate.
And then revisit it in the...
This fall.
Second. This is second, okay, I own. Repeat the motion. Motion by Jane, second by Randy. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's on, Jerry.
No, they're not.
Yeah, I was going to say, they're just...
Okay, that's a big yard waste. And fence size. Landscaping needs.
We're... this is the year we're going to need to replace quite a lot of mulch. And the last time we did this, we ordered it by the semi-load. I don't know if it's available in any smaller load than that. But we split that load, what, about 60/40, Jane?
That sounds close, I was going to say... Yeah, about 60/40.
65/35, maybe, with Jane and Jim. Weighed everything that they took and subtracted it from the original invoice and they reimbursed us for that. And because the meeting was coming up and it's kind of a big expense, I don't know what the mulch is going to cost this year. But when we did this two years ago, that... maybe it was three years ago. Three years ago, that load of mulch was $3,400. So it's going to be somewhere around that or a little bit more. Yeah, total cost. And then Jim and Jane reimbursed the city about $1,000, $950.
Was it, I can't...
I can't remember.
Or does the mulch come from trees?
It comes from...
Atama?
I believe it's Atama or Ascaloosa.
Ascaloosa.
Or pine trees? Both.
But it is much... I do know it's much cheaper to get a... maybe you can get a half a semi-load too, I don't know.
We'll have to check into that, but... and that was good cedar mulch? It wasn't just pine mulchered, whatever kind. So... and we did get three years out of it, I think. So that was... but it's time again, there's not much left under there and you can't tell today with the snow, but...
Not by the time you rake things out.
So Nancy, where would that money come from? I mean, what area of the budget?
Well, we have some money in our parks budget for that. And I have to look to see what's left. Oops, then I did that wrong. There is... There is actually $3,446 left in the grounds maintenance and repair budget for the park today.
Do we need more T-Ruck or anything at the park? Check that out at all, Jerry?
It's a little early for that kind of stuff yet.
Spring is even here, so I haven't even been looking at that yet. Was here and now it's back to winter.
So maybe we better not be taking it all out of one. I guess that's what I was getting at.
Well, there's other money. There's still $850 left in the gas and electric budget for the park that isn't going to get used either. So there's money left in the park budget.
And you don't see any big repairs coming? Janelle tried, I mean...
Till they start breaking tables again? That's always your issue.
Are we able to turn that into insurance under vandalism?
Yeah, but we have a $1,000 deductible. Yeah. And, you know, we're at that point in the year, this is April. So we're at that point in the year that, other than this mulch, anything big that would come up, we can push into July and next year, so...
As far as charges?
Yeah.
They break some things anyway.
When you're a big 200-pound kid.
Yeah, I know.
You don't take that much, they figured it out. How the legs are, I mean, all you have to do is really take it and try to whip it, it snaps, I mean, that's...
They'll jump in the middle, they jump end to end and, you know. I've seen them on there jumping back and forth on one seat. You know, like from one side of the seat to the other, eventually it just starts going like this and it takes one and...
Yep.
Well, I don't want to make the motion because I don't have a number for you tonight or how much. But I'd like to work with you and find out the cost this year, whether you can get a half a semi-load, that sort of thing. And how much... you have a pretty good handle on how much you need, not quite yet, okay? So I want to make the motion, but if someone else might consider that, that would be... I mean, we're looking at getting some, but I can't guarantee you we'll get as much as we did last time.
I'm going to make a motion. How soon do we need that mulch?
Soon.
That's... second.
If it's no mulch?
If it ever quits snowing and we can... but Laura's got...
That's over, it's the June then.
Laura's got part of this cleaned off and as she's cleaning these off, that's the time to re-mulch when you're doing that and so...
Don't you plant? I don't think they're all good yet.
It's too early to know, but they should all come back. What she's gotten cleaned up looks really good, like it's going to come back. But there was a little too much snow on them yet when I went by to check every plant. And there are a lot of plants that need to be divided and moved this year.
She's going to do that as well?
Yep.
Well, then I get to have a plant sale?
Maybe.
There should be plenty.
The problem with the plant sale is pottin' them up.
You know, I can't just... well, I talked about later, but you can divide that and whoever wants them can come. You know, have a couple of people dividing them as they come.
I'll put you in charge of that. The hard part is the coordination of all that. To get people there when you're trying to do it. And you can know that you can be there and... yeah.
And some of them have gone through a pretty tough drought, I know the ones... Grandma said, I don't know if I want to divide them quite yet.
Those aren't the ones, it's the ones in the bump outs that...
That are really bad, especially this one across the street.
Yeah. These down here, I'm not sure were quite there, but...
They've been pretty good though.
Some of those you need to just divide to make them healthier. So I don't...
To rejuvenate.
Yeah. But anyway.
Every three years.
You have a motion by Randy.
Second.
Okay, let's repeat the motion, I've lost it.
Motion to purchase the mulch.
Jane will work with Nancy.
Any further discussion on the motion to purchase mulch? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
What's alleys?
As many as we can afford to do, but you guys have to set the price.
I think if you do one, you got to do them all.
I don't know that we can do all of them. How much money do you want to spend?
How much does it get cost? I know, but at least fill the holes on some of the...
Well, yeah, I think that...
That kind of...
Well, like our alley, there's only one residence that uses that whole alley.
But he's up and down there a lot.
What?
Where are you down there, is that what you're saying?
I mean, that'd be a blacktop if they were like...
I know almost all the ends of the alleys are bad.
Jerry, you know, can we do something where, you know, all of them? I did my little tour and all of them are pretty rough. I mean, they haven't had gravel for a long time. And so if we do work on one, we probably need to work on another. And when I say work, maybe not the whole thing, but maybe spots of gravel where it's really needed, yeah.
And then just drag them and drag it.
Drag them down.
The... and gravel rather than white rock unless there's places where we really need the white rock. Because the white rock was $23 a ton. We should gravel... Jerry, we should get gravel for 10 or under, shouldn't we?
Road gravel.
What do you guys want?
No, the price of gravel, if we get it from Moore out here, hopefully, we can get it for 10 or under. Wasn't he about 6?
Road gravel.
He doesn't make road gravel.
He doesn't have road gravel?
He's a wash plant.
Yeah, he needs road gravel.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I was going to say...
He uses wash rock out there. He uses wash rock out there.
Yeah, he's a wash plant deal, he's not road gravel.
Well, he's an Auburn business, so we should ask him first.
He may be able to haul there.
Can I make a motion that we get... I don't know if I want to call it bids, but I want to get information from a number of suppliers of the kind of gravel we want. So whether it's Teef and Toll or Wurches or Moore or whomever, that we have something to look at. And that we've said we've looked at a number of different suppliers, okay?
I don't like to go gravel or one-inch rock or whatever, I mean...
Yeah, maybe we could... What's that?
Solid rock or raw?
No, we want road gravel. Okay. You guys... no, I don't. That's my motion.
Okay, repeat that.
My motion is that we get a number, we contact a number of suppliers for road gravel prices and...
Per ton.
Per ton. And we look at all of the alleys for repair. Let's just leave it open-ended repair.
City Hall and the dinner, we haven't hauled them.
Well, we'll see what's possible.
Because if you haven't hauled them, they'll give you a bit of everything.
Whoever hauls them. Yeah, oh yeah.
We want to get a delivered price, right?
And then maybe we spray it down the alleys for them.
Yeah, whatever, I mean, they come... Yeah, well, it needs quite a bit, they'll belly dump it around the alley, yeah.
Do the alleys need more grading, Jerry?
That would be such a bad idea.
Well, they kind of need to be kind of built up.
Yeah, then it would be easier for Jerry too. What about if we price it, have them dump it in some of the alleys that we decide, that you determine, that Jerry determines really needs it, and then they can dump it too as they go? That would save Jerry a lot of work. He just has to drag the alley. Would you go along with that?
You know, that's fine, whatever, don't like...
You know, get that, the price of that in there. For them to dump in the alleys.
That's the thing is, you got to have a belly dumper do it, because that's the thing it is.
Dump trucks.
Yeah. Or the belly dump, that's what Randy said.
Can they turn in all of our alleys with...
They should be able to turn on that far street and then hit every alley. I mean, I think everyone has it through. Except for by Bob Thule's there.
Yeah, that one don't go on that one.
That's the one that doesn't go all the way that way, I believe. They're like Bob's anymore.
Sandy.
We're on the same alley.
Okay, we'll get prices. That was a motion though.
Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Janelle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The only thing I really have is, I do have the price from the pavement doctor. He's the guy we've had come in the last two times and do kind of crack filling, patching work. I don't know if Jerry has priorities that we need to do, places we need to do something different at. And we... I mean, if you have something that you want to do beyond that, then we need to get somebody in here to give us bids and prices.
What do we have left in the budget to do street work? That kind of pavement repair?
For this budget before the end of the year, we have about $14,200.
And this road gravel, is that going to come out of that for the alleys?
Mm-hmm. But we can use another... we can use... there's other line items that we aren't going to get to the end of. We actually have about $34,000 left in the road use tax budget. We do not have $34,000 in the road use tax fund. We have $26,768 in the road use tax fund.
What about putting cold mix in some of the streets? Cold mix in the holes, at least fill them with cold mix from All-Age.
Don't look at me. I don't know.
If you got the cold mix and just put it in there in the holes and then...
Do we have a lot of holes? There's one down here, but I'm not aware...
I get... I got a little comp... you know, if something's cheap, ain't costing nothing, I can pass these little holes up with, but...
What do you have in mind?
Don't ask.
Hope we're at the city council. Who's supposed to know what our employees are doing?
It's kind of a combination of cold mix, I mean, not cold mix, ground up asphalt we got back there and a little bit of used oil, mix it up. I've been patching holes with it and it's been staying. That cold mix...
Doesn't stay even after you pack it?
Nope.
Okay.
It just... it doesn't do it unless you seal it.
Do we still have the old packer? On wheels, had dirt in it? We got rid of that?
They used it for the tractor pull and they kept doing it, reshooting the bearings. They wore all the bearings and everything out of it and everything, it was...
They just ruined it, huh?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Well, if that works, like what else, what is there, what else is there? So Jerry, you could, those potholes, like even behind Dolly's, that alley that's blacktopped, those potholes could, you think would stick with that mixture?
It does stick with it, but then all of a sudden this, you got a pothole over here along the side of a lane. That... he even, the guy that rugged or whatever...
Pavement doctor?
Rugged.
Yeah, rug doctor, Bob's saying. I mean, he's filled it in there, but it's just the water sits in it.
Yes, yeah, I know.
It's not high enough, it's...
So you're not... your professional opinion is that the pavement doctors, you know, it's okay, but we got another patch?
You just talked about back behind Dolly's. Well, he's done it other place there, but that alley behind Dolly's to Martin's or Janelle's now, whatever, it's just...
It's not going to get better until the drainage is fixed, is that what you're saying?
The tire travel, that makes a difference.
What's that?
Tire travel, trucks, that makes a difference.
Yeah, some ice up in down that alley.
So would it or would it not be worth our money to get the pavement doctor in to look specifically at that alley and do the major potholes, especially along the truck? And I know that sounds very self-serving, but there's a big pothole right around the corner.
Yeah, there is.
And maybe just have him pay particular attention to...
Yeah, I mean, like some of those things, I mean, luck, he does there, but that alley, I don't know what to say. I mean, it just, the water stands and it just flows underneath, whatever you're going to do, it just goes, it works right back out. You know, I... I'm not...
Well, we don't, we're not in a position to replace it.
No, and until we're going to...
We're not going to take silver...
Yeah.
If we replace that alley, there's going to be a lot of...
Yeah, you're right.
Our streets first.
And I'm just thinking, Jerry, if you think your mixture would work, are you saying your mixture would work as well as the pavement doctor?
Well, my mixture's been working a few places, yeah. But no, he does there, I mean, I've just little hot holes here and all that stuff.
That you'll just continue to fill with your secret formula?
Whenever it spots it is, it's kind of a...
It's kind of environmental is... Thing that you get away with.
They're using oil.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
They use oil for the car.
Okay.
So what we spent last year, Nancy?
Zero.
That's a little bit different than they use in...
We spent nothing last year.
We spent two years ago.
About $14,800 and we spent $15,000 the year before that. And what we had done with him is we just told him, we have X number of dollars to spend. His price is $275 a ton. And when he gets to the end of those dollars, then he's done. But he comes in and does as much as he can do with those dollars. And that's what we did both years with him.
So we gave him a dollar amount?
Yes.
I think that's what we...
We gave him $15,000 the year before and he got done before, about two loads before he hit $15,000. He'd covered everything we'd asked him to.
Well, I'll make a motion that we appropriate $15,000. Is that a little too high? Do you want to go $10,000? What do you guys think?
I'd say with the alley working and everything else, $10,000 would be a good start. And if we still have issues, we can address it.
And he can still get some things done for $10,000? You think, Nancy?
How much money do I have?
That's 36 and a third tons. Yeah, I think he'll get something done with that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we get the pavement doctor in and set aside $10,000 for him to fix the major potholes, the critical needs on our city streets.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by Janelle. Let me see. What contractor was this?
The pavement.
The red doctor.
Rug doctor.
The toupee doctor.
Oh my gosh.
Painting contractors come in with the $10,000 worth of work. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And that's with the understanding that Jerry...
Right, I was just going to say that.
That Jerry follows up with his secret formula and passes those smaller ones. Let that pavement doctor take care of the critics.
I did a couple of them for two years and it's holding.
Will you spray orange paint around them so I can see which ones...
That just puts on...
Come on. All right.
I just kind of started that a little bit. Little bit here and there.
You may need a patent attorney here for this.
No, I didn't look patent on this thing.
All right.
I just have to know a patent attorney.
Yeah. Mr. Manu does a patent attorney?
We are. And who? And who? Okay, now we're down to property lease. And you have a copy of the lease there. And this is for Martin Weldy, with Tanner King doing the business as Martin Weldy. This contract is up the end of April. And our lease is to go for another six months or a year?
It's blank.
I mean, what do you guys set up for?
It's blank.
Did you get a chance to copy that letter?
Well, I didn't copy it, but I have it here in front of me. Do you want to know what it says?
Well, I just thought everybody... it's part of the lease.[1763.85] The letter worked with the lease. So I think she's asking for a comment.
Now, what's the letter to the lease?
Well, it's, it's just a blank lease right there, because this isn't the old, this isn't the existing one.
Oh.
This is just a template.
It's a direct copy of the old lease, except for the dates in that blank there.
Okay, this was dated November eighteenth, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What about if we do another lease with him, the same cost for six months, under the conditions that that we give him three or four days to make sure, if anything sits there longer than three or four days, it needs to be moved up there. That'll give him ample time. And that he keeps that, and then he tries to keep that property by Ludwig's clean off. But we'll give it three or four days. And then if it's longer than three or four days, maybe then he should move it up to that empty lot. Because I don't think that empty lot has been used that much. Does he need, does he even need the lot anymore?
Yeah, I think he does, especially with spring coming on.
But you know, give him like three or four days to, to, to fix things, you know, and if it's not done within three or four days, then he should be...
You mean on that, on the, right, or right to the left of the shop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello, what do you guys think? What do you, what do you think, because you're closer to it, Janelle, what, what do you think is is usable for him? I mean, if he's, you know, he's, he's continuing to park, he was real good for a while and didn't have anything along, in front of the stop sign on the city's in front of Ludwig's. Let's just delineate it that way. As long as he's got his iron wagon and whatever else needs to sit there permanently, or long term, in front of his property, I'm personally okay with that. That's when it starts to drift toward the stop sign. He's got a shredder that's been sitting there a while, I, I know.
Stop shirmer.
Yeah, well, say it's a chopper. Okay. Sorry.
Another farm lingo.
It's difficult to not...
Let's use the right lingo there.
Okay, at any rate, that's what concerns me. And that it's, it's, there is an example of where it sat there for quite a while. And to me, if he was going to utilize the lot, he could take, that's a perfect example of something to take up there and sit there until he gets time, I'm guessing it's something that he needs to, to work on. It's that drift toward the stop sign in front of Ludwig's that is a concern. Because that was the whole premise in providing the lease, as I remember it, was that he doesn't have room. And it, but he's, I would suggest that he needs to to honor the agreement by making sure that anything that is, let's call it semi-permanent or permanent, something that he needs access to on a continuous basis, like the iron wagon, if I'm calling that the right thing, that he keep it in front of his shop. And the rest of it, he takes up to the city property and rotates it within ten days, or utilizes the, the lot that you own on north of the house.
Which is full.
Well, it, it, it could be better utilized, but I know all about that kind of stuff, where you, you know, it's now spraying, so now you could move stuff around. There would be a perfect spot for him to, there's plenty of room back there, in my opinion, north of your house, that he wouldn't need to drift onto Ludwig's front property there, or the city's. And I would be more inclined to talk to him if, if he needs a clarification. I doubt he does, but, but, I mean, because I, I think he understands what our intent was.
The one thing else I can think of is a future plan. Is this something we're going to make available for years and years to come? Or is there, is there going to be an end date where he's going to have to find something to do with it? I mean, because someday, hopefully, the city sells that, and somebody builds something there, and I mean, at some point, he's got to progress to trying to find alternative means, other than just that, too.
Right, right, I, I agree, I agree, this is, this isn't a
Not, not an endless thing.
A long-term fix. That's, that's right. And, you know, that was the idea with the six-month lease, is that maybe there would be something worked out.
And that's, and that's tight, to try to get some property acquired, or what, or whatever he has to do.
He has to wait till something comes up.
Right. And...
That's reasonable distance and everything.
Yeah. That thing, I, I don't know, like, we talked with moving that gazebo, if that would encourage Ludwig's to sell that remaining ground, like we talked about that time moving that gazebo. That may encourage them to sell that piece, because
I don't, you, you have their...
I don't know, I, I haven't talked, I don't know what the...
We've tried to buy that lot from them.
They're just not...
They don't want to sell any of it. I think Deb would, but Merle isn't interested. So...
Come on, that golden figure.
Yeah, it'd be ideal.
That golden figure would, you know, would entice, not, not that I'm saying he needs to just go crazy, you know, say, I'll give you fifty thousand dollars for it, you know, anybody will sell it there. But I'm just saying, you know, at some point, that's, yeah, I mean, that, I'm sure thinking...
You gotta go out and...
Eventually, yeah.
I understand, I understand. What about leasing it? Do they even think about leasing it?
I don't think Tanner approached him on leasing.
We lease it for a buck.
And see, they can't lease it, because we currently lease it.
Oh, that's right, oh, okay.
I'm willing to break that lease. I'm just saying, I mean...
Well, if we move the gazebo out, then...
We really don't have a purpose for that leasing.
You know, and I'd kind of like blown that, moving that off.
That's all...
I mean, it's just...
I'm assuming we should apply for an endowment foundation grant for that, so it'll be next summer before we do that.
That would be awesome to move that up.
But you know, they moved, they moved that easy to go. They moved that gazebo from down there, and they just braced up the gazebo, put it on a flat...
Yeah, but it's the concrete plat, pad to set it on up there that's going to cost money.
Yeah, I know it is. But to, to move the gazebo didn't cost, you just braced it up and moved it, picked it up with a, I don't know how they did it.
It'd be utilized, used as a soccer field, I think.
To move the gazebo.
Yeah, yeah, it would be.
Who didn't pay?
The city didn't pay, they just braced it up, got a flat bed in here, I can't even remember.
Yeah, I know, but they were...
You mean that gazebo from there to there?
Yeah.
That wasn't more than...
Well, that was you, whatever.
Yeah, which breaks an idea, didn't it?
Yeah, but you braced it up and you moved it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is there a cement pad under it now?
Yeah.
So, you know, so, but a cement pad wouldn't cost ten grand.
Yeah, a cement pad, it wouldn't be rocking.
Yeah, actually, yeah. I mean, we could, we could, we could get that done before your...
Are the poles where they won't rock though?
Yeah.
Not to jump ahead, where do you guys plan to, even put it up there in the park, I'll...
Yeah, but in the winter, they're still...
Yeah, we're just talking.
And just, before you go to the park, take that other gate, what you're talking about, put the wheels on. Wheel it in there and just...
He's, he's suggesting throwing it.
He's just...
Well, that's the other thing we haven't looked at, is how structurally sound it is to move it again.
Yeah, it might not work.
And, you know, I'm sorry, but twenty-five or seven years ago, there was a lot more volunteerism in this town than there is now for that stuff.
Yeah, so...
Anyway, that's off the, off the subject.
But I mean, that's something that maybe we should look at, too, is, is finalizing that project that we talked about. And either, if, figure out if it's movable, if it's not, then crumble it, you know, it...
To move on it, at least send it to Ludwig's.
And that way, our lease can go away, and it possibly would free up an opportunity there. I don't know.
We'd have to take a light out of there, though.
What's that?
We'd have to take a light out.
We can do that.
I know that, too. You know, I mean, part of the lease, they, they put a...
They put a light in it?
There's a light, a light pole.
Oh, beside it.
Does that come off one of our poles, or where does it come from?
It comes on one of our poles.
It's just like the lighting in the park.
Well, actually, it's sounding like it's, it's more of a to-do item that we need to...
Well, we could use another light up at the park.
The light isn't even on, is it? Doesn't on anymore.
No, the kids used to try about the pole, and just shake it, so how are you supposed to have a ball there?
LED.
I don't know, I think they would have run it then.
Here's where I'm at, for what it's worth, mine, so, is that if we extend the lease to Tanner, that he comply with the other part of the lease, which is to vacate, except in front of his building, vacate that space that whatever, however you want to designate it, it's...
Right-of-way.
The right-of-way in front of the Ludwig property. And that he utilize poor Janelle's yard and, and the lease space for those items.
Why do we want to vacate some of those equipment on that Ludwig property, or the right-of-way by the Ludwig property?
Because it's not, because that is the stuff that is supposedly very temporary in nature. So it should be going into the shop and being moved on. I, I don't have any trouble with it in front, but, but for the, the city is not obligated to provide. I mean, it's a, it's a sad situation.
More farm market, there's two trucks parked over there in the city right-of-way.
In, in front of his pro, or alongside his property. So I, like I said...
So if the welding shop owned that lot right there, then they'd be able to park right there, then is that what you're saying?
They could fill it up.
Yeah, they could fill up the lot, and I guess, yes, they could fill it up, they could, yeah, yeah. No, I, I get it, no, I, I guess they could, because...
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why, maybe if we move on that gazebo, maybe that will trigger something in Ludwig's to do something, because it needs to be done. And then Tanner might even be able to talk about a lease.
Actually, the city has control on everything, and it's on the one side of the sidewalk, even though you don't own it, so...
Yeah.
But if we let one person, like Jim, park his stuff there, then we got to let the other ones park their stuff on their lot property, yeah.
We, yeah, on their property, yeah, we pretty much do allow that, so by precedent or whatever, so that's the difference.
Well, which one do you guys...
Well, Marle.
Marle and Deb.
Marle.
So what do you guys think, Randy?
I think six months is good, and I think we also need to look into that gazebo situation.
Let's get all over that, how's that? And that would show good faith to Tanner, too.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying it.
Yeah. And Tanner showed good faith back to us.
But we can't be the long-term solution, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. We got to figure out something.
Yeah. I'm more than happy to help in negotiation any way we can, you know, on that.
You can help in a move the gazebo.
I could do that, too.
Yes, no, I, I agree, yeah.
You know, I just, I'd love to be able to facilitate him to be able to conduct business there. I would love for him to be able to buy that property, be able to, I know he's cramped where he's at, and, you know, eventually...
Yeah, it is, it's hard for him to...
He can't really know where he is.
Yeah, it's hard, I, I'm sure it is. You want to make the motion?
Um, can I interject one thing?
Yes.
Six months is the end of October, and that's just too busy of a time for Tanner to have to try to address this again. Can we go to the end of the year?
Yeah, that's okay with me.
To December thirty-one?
For me, it, it depends on his compliance with the other...
Well, non-compliance voids the lease.
I know, but then if we get into who's going to...
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay. All right, till the end of the year, I'll make the motion. But can we embed something in the lease that specifically speaks to the right-of-way? And vacating that, except in, directly in front of his property?
Okay.
The end of the year. I would make the motion to extending the lease to the end of the year to Tanner King, AKA Martin Sweldon, four dollar, in consideration of vacating the right-of-way from his property to the stop sign. You can write it up for me, that's my motion.
I'll say it.
Motion by Jane, second by Justin. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Um, Cindy had one thing she wanted to add. Did you still want to add to give him three or four days to get it moved, or are you okay with this, this way?
Three or four days to get it moved in front of the shop, or whatever. I guess in front of the shop, I don't know how.
Or are we okay with it in front of the shop?
Yeah.
As long as it's not on the street.
But not...
Okay, so then we don't need that.
If he's got something, three or four days, put it in Janelle's yard. Right, well, I know it's hard.
Or, or Jane's yard. Okay, all right, then I'll leave it alone.
Okay.
Okay, you have the motion, the way it's supposed to be. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you abstain? And Janelle abstain?
Can we, can we take action on another discussion topic that was part of that discussion, like the gazebo? Okay.
I mean, you can direct us to get a plan in order, I mean...
Yeah, I think we definitely need to take the direction to figure out if it can't be moved. If it can't be moved, then I guess at least we can vote to stay or no.
Yeah.
Yes. I, I already wrote that down in, with a red mark to, for next month.
So let's do this, can, can I suggest that we put it on the agenda for next month?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And come back with your plan.
Okay, then what can we do?
Okay.
This is kind of all about making work for you tonight.
No, it ain't bad.
Oh, Verdi wants to talk about the gazebo.
I don't know where they're going to put it.
Behind Home Plate, is where we want it. Where?
Yeah, Home Plate.
Yeah.
It's in the ballpark.
Why?
We're going to put soccer field.
Don't care.
Soccer field don't go on north side of the fence. I don't think they should be...
This is all going to change all next year.
It should be south of the fence.
What's that change?
What's that?
Because you're digging up the field, right?
No, you're not digging...
Digging up the field, but that's where, a soccer field could be right across that.
Why are we, why are we digging?
Has that been approved?
We're out to the highway.
No, no, Jerry, she's on the outside of the fence.
Oh, the out, well, actually...
I'm on the north side of the fence.
You said where the, you, you told me where the home plate was at.
Behind Home Plate, north side of the fence.
Well, I'm home plate is where umpire is at, that's what I'm looking at.
And then I said, wow, we have the north side of the fence.
We don't want to tear it.
We have communication issues.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Well, let's talk about it next month. All right. Verdi, did you have another question?
Okay, there's a bike stand in that gazebo, and it belongs to the city. I've asked Tanner to go ahead and clean that up, so that we can have a bike stand out here for the kids to park their bikes, rather than brought everything from the library.
Didn't we have a bike stand out here at one time?
Yeah. Of course, did.
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't.
I remember it sitting along that side there.
I do, too.
Nobody ever used it, they leaned them up right in front of the...
They aren't going to use this one either, but it'll make Verdi happier.
You're talking about years ago, yeah, nobody used it, years ago.
I think that bike rack was there, and then they moved it down there.
Oh, okay, because I know there used to be one.
That's how that happened. It was here. And then they, we decided we need it down there, for school.
Okay.
And it's never got brought back. So...
Okay.
Okay, I did ask Tanner to go ahead and clean it up and paint it.
Okay. Okay, what are we talking, cost, is that a?
No, no, I didn't put any cost on it, I didn't even ask him.
What are you getting?
It'll be a couple hundred dollars, give or take a hundred.
No, it wouldn't be that. Let's put that on the agenda for next month too, to approve it. If, I mean, Nancy, otherwise it, it's like.
That's a public works line item budget that he could just go get taken care of anytime.
I, but people ask, and so, and, and so if we can't bring that to the council, I mean, I.
I know, but then we never get anything done if you guys are gonna start approving, paying for paper clips, I mean.
But we are responsible for a lot, and, and you know, there's that fine line between micromanaging and knowing what's going on. So that's, I, I, even if, if you ask, if I went and spent city money and said to a friend, you'll, you'll do this, and he, he might be the best expert in the field, it just doesn't look right, so.
This is a city property already, we're just reconditioning it.
I think we should be able to bring it forward absolutely, because people ask, Nancy, I, I don't find.
Okay, take the motion.
Well, I just want, want it on the agenda.
Yeah, people ask, but they're also gonna go, really?
Well, I, I don't know.
I mean, this could be fixed with six dollars worth of spray paint, guys.
Oh, well, that's, he said sandblasted.
I know he did, but.
So, but, but let's define it, if it is just a spray paint.
If it is a spray paint, we, I mean, Jerry should be able to, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, maybe we can do it. Jerry can do it, if it's, if it needs more than that, then we should know that.
Jerry, have you got some of our rolls on about sanding paper, bristle cloth, one inch wide? Get that and then I'll go over and start sanding it down and. Come on, it won't take much to do that. Get all the loose trips off that money.
I just, when you, when you spend money, it's just, I think it's advisable to bring it for the group that authorizes it. And, and especially when you got a connection to the city council, whether it's Tanner or someone that's connected to me or.
Well, it's not like that, but it's a small project, I don't see why we have to outsource it, that's why we have.
Well, that's a, that's a side issue, right?
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It, it, if it's a small project, I don't see why to outsource it.
That's a valid going to. So.
Wouldn't want you to get bored. Yeah. Nobody likes downtime, Jerry.
To work. So, so when we talk about the gazebo next month on the agenda, we can talk about the bike stand that's in the gazebo. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Library, Nancy, you've got some information on the library.
Let's talk about the cleanup day first, can we?
Yeah, I got something written down there already. Question. You contacted Midwest Recovery?
I have, but they, I haven't been able to talk to them today to get my answers to my questions.
What's the, what's the issue?
The issue is, we always charge residents for the service of picking up their appliances and then we could get rid of them for the cost of hauling them, we can't do that anymore, we have to pay to take, for Quant to take them. We can't get rid of water heaters anymore, nobody will take.
Basically, you don't have me to take, I can't get rid of them anymore.
Yeah, so, what I, this piece came in the mail that I sent you guys from Midwest Recovery, and what they do is they will come to town and accept those items. But I haven't, I wasn't able to connect with the owner of the guy because the people I talked to, so I don't know if they'll come that far for a town your size. You know, what they would do is they would bring their, their stuff here, sit here for two hours and people just haul whatever they want to them. But they take computers and all that kinda stuff that we're not able to get rid of at the landfill. So, I don't know that I can, because I couldn't connect with the right guy in time, if I can affect how this.
And there's a fee for it, right?
No.
No?
No, they accept these items free.
That service is free.
Wow.
Yes, that was in.
Okay, so, so the sack, county landfill's not taking appliances any longer?
No, we've not ever, we've not hauled appliances to them forever. Because they charge a fee to take them.
Yeah, I know Carol.
Right, right, they take, oh, okay, so you're talking about something free, it isn't that you can't take them up there, it's just they'll charge a fee.
Right, and most of, a lot of their fees, I think, are based on weight.
Yes.
See, so how do we charge someone to pick it up here?
So what you're saying, we can't do the free pickup?
Well, we've charged residents twenty dollars for their appliances, for the service of picking it up at their property.
Can we just simply say that we do cleanup day, but we're not going to.
I don't know, do you wanna go there?
I don't wanna go there.
I don't wanna go there.
No.
But that's why I was hoping I could get through to this guy, I was, I was hoping that maybe what you guys would let me do is work it out with this guy to see if he would come to town that day or a couple days later.
Yeah, that would be.
Why, why can't we no longer charge them to?
Well, because we double charge if you took them to sack, see, they charge too.
What we don't know is what the fee is to deliver it to sack, so we don't know if we've collected enough money.
Well, it all costs seven dollars to drop them at Quants. And it's cost twenty-five to drop them in Carroll.
Yeah, there's the guy that you know.
Take it to Quants, don't worry about the landfill, landfill charges double or triple.
Yeah, they're like twenty-five bucks, I know, in Carroll, and Quants charges you seven dollars, it doesn't matter if it's a fridge or washer.
I'd have to ask about computer stuff.
Yeah, they won't take computer stuff there, I know, you gotta take that to the landfill.
Yeah, that'd be a different thing there.
Yeah, computers and TVs.
That's why it was easier if I thought we could get one company that would just take all of those things. Then we prevent those things from going to the landfill, because they don't belong there anyway.
Right, well.
You know, that's, that's, I guess, part of my point.
Separate those out and they go into the toxic.
Yes, but, but if we could get them recycled rather than.
Right.
Landfilled.
Right.
If you think there's a potential that the guys from Des Moines will bring, I don't know, a dumpster or something up here that we can fill up that day and.
If I could get this arranged that they would come up sometime that week and spend two hours collecting this, is that okay for me to do that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Basically, what they do is they come in with a crane truck and they grab it and they just put it in this big box.
Yeah, but you haul it to them is exactly.
Coordinate a little bit with like Bank City and Bankview.
Well, I was hoping we could coordinate with Litton.
Yeah, well, it'd be worth them.
Have a.
To make it worthwhile for them to kinda do.
Say we have a three hour slot here and then they can move on to another town, that would be awesome.
Yeah. That's, that's what I was hoping for, but I couldn't, the guy hasn't called me back to ask enough questions to take those next steps.
That'd be good, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, see, it says computer system, does that include the monitors also?
Yeah.
And everything, and then it means they'll take television sets?
Um.
Except two television.
They don't take.
I don't think there's hardly any tubes left, is there?
Clarify it by their listing, what are the more takes?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, before the digital.
Yeah, there's a few of those left.
Those, those are still heavy.
Yeah, very, very, yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, but they'll take dehumidifiers and air conditioners.
Connected with it.
Came in the mail.
They'll take stuff for free in the mail. How about batteries, like the flash lights you sold?
Yes, yes, they take batteries.
Good for you.
Be careful, there's a guy that had one of those, that are five volt batteries.
I mean, there's some things that we don't need them to take, but.
You're kidding, oh, yeah, I do remember that.
Do you need a motion? All right, Randy made one that Nancy further investigate, I'll second it.
Who made the motion?
All right.
Randy, or voted by Randy, seconded by Jane to do some further investigation?
If I can get them up here that week of May seventh, just do it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay? Cause that's what we're scheduled for.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, Janelle, now may I go to the library? Okay.
I think we're sticking with that.
Go ahead.
We are. It's okay.
Okay, what is, uh, the meeting to do with the library?
Well, basically, there's no council action to take tonight, after we had discussions. Um, there were concerns about them getting started with their thirty hours a week, and so that we would have enough data on increased usage and things like that, um, by our budget time. And what's going to happen is the library board is going to begin the thirty hours a week June first. That first two weeks will come out of this year's library budget and they're gonna find a way to make that work. Then, because of the way the calendar lays, beginning the sixteenth, those wages are actually on next year's budget. So it's two weeks and the library board has just decided to pick that up and begin at June first, so unless you guys are upset by that plan, that's just what's gonna happen and.
Yep.
Okay, public forum, nobody from the public is present, it's a present time, so we'll kinda overlook that one for now. Okay, discussion items and reports, public works.
Well, I don't know if I take the plow on, put it on, or get the lawnmower out, or what am I supposed to do, but.
Well, if we're gonna be having a pleasure, don't go on vacation.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the only thing is, I wanna clean up a little bit more of, to pick property up there, some concrete. But I don't wanna take it to the dump, I got a place out there, what's Crutico's, Pond Rose, what I always call it. I could dump some of that concrete in there's a rain to keep rolling.
Is that, is that loose concrete or are you digging it up?
Big chunks.
They're just sitting there?
What's that?
More won't take it, he doesn't have any pressure, I imagine, how about Seppant Tower?
He wouldn't pay for it.
Oh. I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, but most of the time you take concrete to Seppant Tower to, you gotta pay.
Just charge it for, then no pressure, and then just charge it again.
But can't have rerun.
It's a brand back, I know. It's a good racket, if you hit it with.
How you gonna get all the chunks down Crutico, you know?
That's a pretty narrow little lane down there.
How you gonna haul them down there?
City truck.
Load it up in the dump truck?
Yeah. He's got ravines there, he's rolling out and all that stuff, instead of going to the dump, I mean, down there and just keep filling this up, if I get a place where, you know, it's clean stuff to put it down there, it's not, if that's okay with you guys. The fees are approval of it, I'll say that.
You don't need a dozer to break it up, or an end loader, or anything like that?
No, there's chunks there, a lot of that with the forks and stuff, you can pick it up, you know, you, you can get it out, it just, I'm not, I'm not taking that slab out.
All right, that's what I.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Ah, Jerry, that'll be all summer.
He's ambitious.
The sled tamper. The sled tamper.
It's just chunks of that, instead of taking it to the dump, you know, and filling that up, you know, someplace can. Yes. Have you noticed many problems up at the dump? No. This, starting off the year. The guy that pulled all the other stuff there, he was living Auburn to begin with.
Well, he didn't live in Auburn, why he hold that crap?
Yeah, why he thought he could haul it here is beyond us, but.
Yeah, exactly. Jerry, our street light's going bad whenever you get Paul riding into town.
Why don't you fix it, it's yours.
Shit me up there. And, uh, they're tough, they're tough couple of people, tough crowd tonight. And, and don't forget Aunt Pressley's trees on the corner with Fred and kids.
Shouldn't be growing back.
Okay, it shouldn't?
That's all I, all I gotta say.
Okay.
Okay, Jerry, some time ago we discussed about that little pump house, is it, or the little building, does it be replaced or repaired or anything?
There's one that we're gonna tear out.
Between the, the pipe and the.
Yeah. But I've called, uh, Wartus a couple times, I haven't got no reply there. And, uh, Gus Cleveland should be coming back from Texas, cause he's gonna have to get a backhoe, and he's gonna have to get in there to do this thing too, and I wanna get it coordinated with them and that, to get it down, to get it out, and get that cleaned out, cause a big backhoe can't get underneath the water tower.
So this is the, this is the more of the bigger building and then, or the pump house is the one with, down in the ground and the.
That's just a little, whatever that thing there and then that other building on the.
You're gonna take that whole building out, right?
Just a little, one of the whole, everything?
You can do it all out.
No, you're taking your valve shed out.
That's what I was, there's the.
It'll freeze.
The valve shed?
The one at the ground level.
Coming at once.
You're gonna take that out?
Yeah.
How are you gonna put it back in?
Put it back in, that's what I wanna talk to over there, put that cement thing over the panel.
Okay, all right.
Oh, that bolt thing.
Yeah.
Could taste like a gazebo over there and wall that in and.
Oh, no.
Oh.
That's a gazebo.
Moving on.
Just tear the damn gazebo down?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking dynamite.
I got some Tanner, eh?
Let's go, that's awesome, I love that.
Hey, I was having public first call.
Did you happen to look at the playground equipment at all? The, the loose? Okay. I picked that, but it was cold, it's gotta be pulled back, I didn't wanna do it in the wet time, cause it's gonna snap, it gotta warm up, yeah. Okay, I didn't know if you had a chance to look at it. I looked at that, we can't find bolts. Can't. So it's gonna be a kind of a modified thing, and then cut it off and then.
Cherryized.
Yeah.
Cherryized.
Very special mixture, I mean. Yeah, no, it's not, serious special mixture, it ain't coming out.
So, another thing, on the, the things underneath the streets, the sidewalk, the water always backs up clear to our parking. Do we, do we have to clean that thing out?
The culvert?
That's the drain, the culvert under the sidewalk is so plugged up at Thewins, and it backs clear up for our driveway almost. Sometimes if we get a heavy rain.
I would just clean mine out.
Yeah, I so pack in there, I tried, what do you, what do you think of what Red did on that drain, is that a decent thing to do?
You know, I never even thought about it, down or, or go down, look at it.
It, it took it away pretty good, actually. What did he do to it? He actually put a field tile in there, or it looks, intake, it looks like a field intake. And so then he propped it up and it doesn't, they're not sunk so low in the ground where. Cause the drain is on the other side of the sidewalk, the water can't even drain to the other side of the sidewalk.
You're talking about top one of the sidewalk?
Yeah, it can't, yeah, no, not the drain, no, it's the, the tile under the sidewalk is so full of dirt, you can't even get, you can't even touch it.
I intend to tear mine out this year, I'm gonna tear it out and then I'm gonna redo it. So basically, it's just a cement passer, if I'm gonna put a metal plate over it, then I'm done kissing with it. Honestly, I.
He, he has the same problem.
Yeah, I got same problem at my place, it backs all the way up to my sidewalk, I'm just gonna tear that little chunk out. I'm gonna make a sidewalk, it's just gonna come down, count it in the square, it's just gonna be a passer with a metal plate on top, so I can take the metal plate off and scoop it out, clean it out, whatever I gotta do.
And Red did a variation of that, he took that culvert out. Yeah, but I can't, I can't fix a neighbor's sidewalk.
No, no, you're right.
You're right.
Red's actually.
There's gotta be something that, that a person should do, could do it, but it is city sidewalk, that area's city sidewalk.
What they should really do, if you really would get down to it, you need to come with the backhoe, you start digging these things back out, they've been filled up.
Yeah, I know they have, they have been filled up.
Over the, I mean, you know, it's full of dirt, dust, and, cut the ditches back in so that people, you know, what do you want? You wanna ditch in there, or you want it smooth, I mean, that's the thing it is, it's just, this didn't happen overnight, I guarantee you.
No, I know, yeah. Do you want it easy to mow, or do you want?
Or do you want drainage? Justin has, you really have about the best idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, to me, that's the easiest way to do, is just take that three foot chunk out and basically make it flat and then come down to a U.
There you go.
And have some metal plates sits on top, and then I'm probably gonna cement it all the way over to that drain. Just cup it out and cement it and. That'll be my problem.
He just, he just uses his name, don't you love those people saying, don't use my name?
Well, you keep your name on your hand, you don't wanna jump into it.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna fight no job, but that's the do, I'm just gonna do it, so tell you.
I want, I want that bolt, right?
What's that?
And I couldn't even budget. I was gonna say, the soil was so hard.
That would work if you wanna know.
Yeah. They're not gonna do anything to fix it.
No, they're not.
No.
It'll be in city property. And you're gonna, yeah. And you just happened to live next by that, yeah?
Yeah.
The sidewalks belong to the homeowner, guys.
They'll squeal on it.
I'm not gonna squeal on it.
Just do it, Randy.
Just do it. Yeah.
I'm gonna do it my way, Jerry. You know, like you do, special mix?
Yeah, make sure nobody's around.
Okay, next item, city clerk.
We won't tell.
Um, couple of things. You guys, it, it's in that blue folder. There's a request to you from the Partners of Progress in SAC City. They've had this Bubba Sorensen do one of these Freedom Rock things up there, and they're looking for money donations to, um, fix up the building on that property so that it has restrooms and is a welcome center and stuff. They're asking you for donations. I did not put it on the agenda. Jane has the pink slip for the Small Cities Workshop. If anybody is interested in going to that, we can get you signed up. This year's is a little difficult because the nearest one is Madrid. And in my opinion, they're not the best, um, the best seminars either. And I guess the only other thing I have is the SETD has hired a director and she starts on Monday.
Who is it?
Her name is Chloe Wallace from Lakeview. She's very young, has a degree in marketing, but has no economic development experience. So there'll be a lot of training and steep learning curve for a while, but she's pretty young and ambitious and...
That's good.
Yeah, I, I think so. One of the things SETD has had is budget issues. We were spending about eighty-five or ninety percent of our budget on wages with the situation we had before, and we're, we were able to employ her and get down to about fifty-five percent of our budget. So we'll have money to do something else with besides pay wages.
Is she new to the area or is she not family around?
Nope. She grew up in Lakeview or SAC City somewhere.
She, her family's been on the Wallace, her grandparents been involved.
So, ties to the county, ties to the land, knows the county well, which we felt as a board was, was important. And the, you know, the people with real good experience wanted a lot of money that we couldn't pay in SAC County, Iowa. So, so, yeah. I'm excited about that.
Takes a lot off your plate, I'm sure.
I hope.
Okay, next item is the SAC County Solid Waste Board. And there's nothing to report there. She's just going formally. I'm calling the nine one one meetings. That's the...
This is a landfill.
Jay, has already been there before? There is an emergency. I'm not gonna tell you where.
You're on that board?
I'm on the SAC County Solid Waste.
That's what I was asking. Why, why get the information on us then?
Okay. Why do you get the information on it? Because you're the alternate.
They're the mayor.
I'm supposed to be taking over your place.
No.
No, you're, you're the alternate.
You're just being informed.
Yeah, communicated with.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I still don't have anything to report. Go ahead, Jane, you report.
More developments.
SAC County Solid Waste. Now I completely lost my train of thought. They are looking at adding some office space out there where they built the new building. And let's see, I was trying to think of what else. Oh, we, there's a new recycling effort with shingling. So, with shingles. So you can get, um, a certain percentage off. I believe they'll give you like a hundred dollar deduction per ton, or for, for total tonnage if you, uh, bring clean shingles in. They can have the nails in them, but not the wood shingles underneath. And there's gonna be a detailed kinda marketing effort that comes out with that. So, um, and other than that, I can't think of anything else that was discussed. But in case I think of something later, I'll let you know. Okay, that's it.
I'm gonna go through this next one again.
Now, I see you've got some mileage submitted. Did you, are you sure you went somewhere?
Well, yeah. I went to Calhoun County.
Poor guy.
I went to Calhoun County for a meeting.
I'm just kidding. Okay. That's all from SAC County Solid Waste.
Sheriff's Department.
The report's in here, right?
And I read that on the computer. Well, the mayor made enough comments tonight. I'll just let the comments take place for their time.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, I have comments.
Oh, you do? Oh, I'm sorry.
The car show group is going to start fundraisers. So I guess I'm asking to use the shelter house, May 3rd, to have a garage sale. So anybody that wants to donate anything, we're taking donations after, or beginning, what'd we say?
What, junk appliance?
April 28th. April 28th. No, no. No. That's why we're not taking anything till April 28th.
April 28th, you will receive items. Is there anything you wanna stay away from, like clothing or, I mean, some...
I'm thinking appliances. We don't wanna be stuck with that.
We got you worried now, no?
Well, I told her this earlier. I said, if you accept appliances and TVs from anybody, it's with the stipulation, if they don't sell, they come and get them.
Which you don't want.
Well, I think we'd take about anything other than appliances, appliances and TVs. I mean...
Old computers.
Yeah, we don't want that kinda stuff.
Hey!
Well, bring it up.
Let's fill the park with water and see if it floats.
I know something about floating.
Now I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Oh, not yet. Jane or Janelle, was that a fundraiser or fundraiser?
Fund?
We're adjourned.
Jane.
Yeah. We are.